All right. We're ready.
Let me just, sorry, let me just make sure I'm checking. Okay, yes.
Okay, we're gonna call to order the meeting of the Kingsburg Planning Commission for Thursday, February 8th. And we will start off with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Rock?
Present.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Bling?
Present.
And Commissioner Chris.
Present. Next item on the agenda is approval of the January 11th, 2024 minutes as mailed or corrected. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 11th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item three on the agenda, public comments. Any person may directly address the planning commission at this time on any item not on the agenda. Seeing nobody in the public to come forward to take advantage of this item, we will waive that and move on to item four, which is the discussion of pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans. And I'm gonna turn it over to our building official, A.J. O'Connell.
Good evening, commissioners. A.J. O'Connell, building official for the city of Kingsburg. Tonight, we will be continuing our discussion that we started at the last regular meeting in January regarding the city of Kingsburg's ADU program and the possible action for adopting a design concept to move forward to our city council. So just to recap, in case anybody's watching online, on January 11th, 2024, the planning commission received a presentation from city staff regarding recent ADU laws regarding these, regarding pre-approved ADUs, also regarding the current permitting process for the ADUs within the city of Kingsburg, objectives for an ADU program, recommended legislative steps, and sample plans from other jurisdictions. Furthermore, planning commissioners met individually with myself here at the office to review proposed pre-approved ADU design concepts that were presented at the last meeting. Again, just a, just a quick recap. Housing production in California is not keeping pace with demand. In the last decade, less than half of the homes needed to keep up with population growth were built. Lack of housing plus increased demand equals high housing costs. The state legislature has essentially said that diversifying the housing supply through ADU development is one solution to address these, these issues that are facing the state of California. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, tend to be significantly less expensive to constrict and offer benefits that address common development barriers. Which brings us to AB 1332. This was passed in the most recent legislative session. It regard, it is in, it's all about pre-approved ADU plans. It requires each local agency to develop a program for the preapproval of accessory dwelling unit plans by January 1, 2025. Initially, it requires the local agency to approve or deny the application for a permit within 30 days from the date of its submittal. It does allow local jurisdictions the flexibility to adopt pre-approved plans based on their own respective community needs. That's a quick recap. So after meeting with all of the commissioners and reviewing the plans that we presented at the last meeting, city staff and consultation with, with planning commissioners have kind of settled on two separate plans. These have been provided to us by Fresno Council of Governments as potential design concepts for the city of Kingsburg's pre-approved ADU plan. So for, I know all of you have seen these, but again, for the audience that may be watching in cyberspace, this is the one-bedroom design that we're gonna be presenting for possible, possible approval for tonight. This is one-bedroom, one bath, 550 square feet. As you can see, it has, it does have a coat closet here, has a walk-in closet, not really a walk-in closet, but a coat closet for the one-bedroom here. It also has a kitchen design with the peninsula breakfast bar nook design as well. It also has space for a stackable washer and dryer. Initially, we're also going to be presenting for possible approval tonight, the two-bedroom plan. This is 775 square feet, two-bedroom, one bathroom. As you can see, the bedrooms are side by side. They are, they are the same size, so there isn't really a delineation between a master bedroom or a junior bedroom. It does have the one bathroom. It has room for side-by-side washer and dryer units. And one of the things I really like is the inclusion of the large kitchen and dining area. Each one of these potential floor plans does come with three engineered designs. This is a Mediterranean design. This is a Craspin design. And this is the contemporary design. So both the 550-square-foot and the 775-square-foot floor plans have each, are available in each one of these elevations. So for a potential of six separate plans that would be available to the community. The last meeting, when presenting the ADU program, we stated certain objectives that we would like to have the ADU program fulfill. So the first was to encourage the development of ADUs by offering a selection of pre-approved plans to homeowners. What we've presented here would adequately meet these, meet this objective. Is that, again, we would have six separate plans that would be available to the community. Offer a variety of sizes and styles that will match the diversity of Kingsburg's neighborhoods and the needs of households throughout the city. Especially with the elevations, they're very consistent with the type of development that is occurring around the city. We also have given options for one-bedroom and for two-bedroom that are of reasonable size that could potentially fit very well on our existing lots that we have here within the city. Provide an affordable means to comply with evolving ADU legislation and mandates. These are pre-approved. They would be available to the community without retaining the services of a licensed design professional. One of the benefits of going with these particular plans is that they have been pre-engineered and pre-reviewed by Fresno Council of Governments and precision engineering. And we would be able to retain the rights to those plans. We would be able to distribute them to whomever city staff sees fit. We would also be able to streamline the permitting process to obtain an ADU using the pre-approved plans. If you remember, at the last meeting, I had a pretty comprehensive flow chart for a plan-checking process that currently, right now, our ADUs have to go through. If we adopt these design concepts, we would be able to, for the most part, skip some of those steps and make the permitting process easier for community members. And then finally, we would achieve compliance with AB 1332. And we would obtain compliance significantly ahead of the deadline. If the city council were to, well, if the planning commission were to recommend these design concepts for approval to the city council, which would be through a resolution, there would be some required design conditions per the building, building standards codes that these plans would have to meet and that applicants would still have to provide to the city in order to obtain a building permit. The first would be a property-specific site plan. So this would not be pre-approved. The applicant would have to develop their own plan and they would have to submit it as part of the permit application. These plans will require applicants to retain the services of a truss engineer to design trusses for the roof assembly. This is a requirement based on the size of the, size of the dwelling units, locations of certain bearing walls, and also our unique climatic conditions that we have here. These plans would also require solar. Per the energy code, they are, the dwelling units are large enough to automatically require the addition of PV, photovoltaic. They would also have to have individualized sites, property-specific energy code calculations and certifications. This would include any sort of shading that may be on the, may be on their property, orientation of the dwelling unit and how it relates to where windows are. There's a calculation that the energy code does require and they would have to provide this and this would not be pre-approved. They would also have to provide a fire sprinkler plan if the existing dwelling unit currently does have fire sprinklers. After meeting with all of you individually, these were some of, some suggested conditions. Like we do any other development, we do have the ability to provide, to provide conditions on this particular type of development. We can certainly take notes if that's what the commission desires. We could, we could include that into a resolution if the commission so desires. One of the suggested design conditions was to have the ADU accessory dwelling unit have separate utilities from the main, main dwelling unit, the primary dwelling unit. In the conversations that we had, this was, seemed to be a topic of conversation, especially considering the ADU laws now are essentially turning ADUs into condominiums. They can be sold individually without an owner occupancy requirement. Separate utilities would at least ensure that if that were to happen, that the primary unit wouldn't be affected. We could essentially treat it as a, as a separate unit. And the separate utilities would be electrical, water, sewer, and gas. Providing a sliding door option on the 775 plan, the suggested conditions is, I'm gonna go ahead and put it back up here, to include a sliding door, possibly in this location here, in the breakfast nook. That's a pretty easy design change. It's a pretty, it's an option that we could certainly provide to applicants should they want to do that. It wouldn't require any sort of engineering or anything special of that nature. We, we would be able to accommodate that request pretty easily. Incorporating our city standard patio design. We do offer a city standard patio. It's a flat roof. It's really nothing, nothing special. But like the ADUs, it is pre-approved. Currently, right now, if a, if a community member wants to build a city standard patio, they just have to submit to us a property-specific site plan. We reviewed the site plan for compliance with our, our zoning ordinances. And as long as they build to that city standard plan, we can go ahead and we can issue the permit essentially over the counter. We can certainly incorporate our city standard patio design with this, with these two design concepts. This was another option that, a condition that was, that was provided to essentially remove the coat closet on the 550-square-foot plan and install an additional door to the bathroom. Essentially, we can pretty much eliminate the coat closet here and then put a door that goes directly from the living room into the bathroom, thus negating the need to go through the bedroom to go into the bathroom. That's another option, another condition that could be, could be included. And then finally, a covenant for architectural matching. As you can see, we had, we have three separate design options, design elevations that do fit in with majority of the houses that are within the city. As a condition of the community using this pre-approved plan, the commission can recommend a covenant that the elevation must, to a substantial degree, match the architectural rendering of the main dwelling unit. Want to give you some policy alternatives that would, are available to you. The planning commission can choose not to participate further in this design concept process, thus delegating the responsibility to city staff and to the city council. Again, this is the, A.J., we don't really care what you do. Go away. Be a little hurt, but that's, that's how it works. The planning commission can opt to not select any of the presented design concepts and direct city staff to develop other options. A.J., these are horrible. Go find us something new. We can certainly do that. The planning commission can select one or more of the design concepts presented with modifications or amendments. I gave you certain conditions that our conversations had come up with that would fit in with this particular option. The planning commission can select one or more of the design concepts presented with no modifications or amendments. A.J., these are good. Moving on. Let me present to you what the recommended next steps would be for this process. Receive public comment on the presented design, design concepts. I don't think we have anybody here, but as you can see on the agenda, we do have a opportunity for the public to comment on the design concepts. Please discuss amongst yourself, especially considering the conditions that I brought up in my presentation. Evaluate them. We can, you know, we will take notes and, you know, we will start working on putting together a resolution to approve a design concept. And then finally, if we're all set with that, essentially a motion to approve the design concepts as presented and move the matter forward for city council consideration. So that concludes my, my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. So that gives us some food for thought. Okay, I'll bring it back for commission discussion. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. O'Connell?
Yeah, I have one. A.J., why do we have to have truss calcs if we're using a standardized plan? We're not changing the pitch, so if it, if the plan is consistent, why would you require that?
I'm gonna go back here to the, starting to get into some design questions and that's, that is, that is perfectly, let me kind of come here. So the, essentially, the way that the exterior, so this is the 775 plan here. The way that the exterior walls are designed and the location of the bearing points exceeds what would be considered a conventionally framed design. So I'm not able to pull out the residential code, which governs one and two-family dwellings and say, okay, yeah, with this particular building width and this particular building length, two-by-sixes, 16 inches on center and everything. I could tell you, you know, essentially looking here at the floor plan, come on, Mouse. See here, we, on this 775 plan, we have a 36-foot wide floor plan here. And I'm not, I'm not in-
But we're gonna be, if we're presenting this and it's being used repeatedly, why would you need to do it repeatedly if we're not gonna be changing anything to do with the roofing?
Also going into, into truss calcs, you know, is location. There are, you know, certain design elements, you know, where you're gonna be putting the, the structure on the lot with wind and with seismic. Also keep in mind too, that if there's gonna be solar that is gonna be put on, that, that needs to be put into account in the location of that on the dwelling. So there is a little bit of property-specific elements that do go into that. I'm getting, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm, I'm not 100% I'm not 100% I guess comfortable answering that question because I'm, I'm not a structural engineer, so this is a little bit outside of my, out of my, my scope.
Okay, I think when we spoke that you mentioned that solar now is gonna be required on any new construction in the state of California as opposed to what it used to be where if the existing home didn't have it, the ADU didn't have to have it.
Correct.
Okay, so now we know solar's gotta go on these things. So now we've standardized that. So trying to keep as much cost out of this as we possibly can, it just seems redundant to have to, to redo the truss calc, even the energy calc. I mean, I, I get the trees and the shade and that kind of stuff, but they're nominal. But it just, anyway, it's, that would be my concern.
It's, it's, it's certainly noted. There are, there are pre-approved plans that, you know, I did present in our last meeting that did have conventional design that essentially, you know, yeah, you could-
This is considered a non-conventional design. It's, it's a rectangular box, so.
Doesn't seem non-conventional to me.
Other than the dimension, I guess, that you, that you alluded to.
Yeah, I mean, I could also tell you that, you know, pretty much everything, all of the structures that we are permitting nowadays use trusses. Even though they, they do have to be stamped by an engineer, it actually turns out to sometimes be a cheaper option than conventionally framed. The idea being is that, you know, I could come in and say, yeah, you need, you know, this could work with two-by-six rafters, 16 inches on center.
Stick-built.
Yeah, essentially stick-built. Yeah, but, but trusses can come in and they can say, all right, you know, based on this design that, you know, we're gonna be presenting, we could have two-by-four trusses at 24 inches on center. And that would give you, that would give you ability to just say, put attic-mounted equipment because you would be able now to have attic access. It would also help with your energy calculations because you don't have as much mass that's within your, within your thermal envelope. So, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those where, you know, it really does fall down to the design. And, you know, the way that this, this was particularly engineered, it, it required truss calculations.
Why can't we just set a truss, whatever, whatever the number is?
Truss count.
Truss count and not have them have to go get, well, contractor to figure it out? Could we do that?
We certainly look into it. So essentially what you're saying is having a standardized truss design? I mean, we could, we could look at, I, I've, I've never heard of that before, but we could certainly look into it.
If we have a standardized plan, one would fall, but anyway, go ahead.
Nothing further. But, yeah, no, we, you know, we can, we can certainly look into it and, you know, that's one of the, that's one of the difficulties with having a standardized ADU plan. Because it's not like a patio. It's not like a garage. There is a number of different things that you just can't essentially say it's gonna work in Kingsburg. It's also gonna work in Fresno. It's also gonna work in San Francisco. So cities across California are-
A.J., I get all that. What we're talking about is looking at a plan that we would be recommending that we could standardize because it's built in, it was built in Kingsburg.
Right.
The other communities here don't have that. But if you're saying that it can't be, then it can't be, but.
We can certainly look into it. Yeah, we can definitely look into it.
I'd like to see you do that.
So I'm not an expert on trusses, but if we standardize, standardize the truss, truss aspect, does that make it easier for the homeowner or easier for the builder or the person who's gonna be living in this?
I mean, trusses do have to be manufactured. I mean, they can be manufactured on-site if you're qualified to do it, but nobody in Kingsburg is manufacturing trusses on-site. They actually are manufactured at a factory and then they come, they come in on a truck.
So does standardizing it make it easier for the person who's putting this up?
Cut out the, cut out the cost of the truss contractor?
Well, if it makes it easier, the whole object of the, this ADU plan is to make it easier for the landowner to put this up. It encourages them to do that. That's the object of it, so. Yeah, if we can standardize the truss aspect as to what prospective equipment is gonna go on the roof and take a look at that. Of course, we have an engineer might be able to do that. Standardize it. It makes it easier for the homeowner, sure. Why not? I have, I have nothing wrong, nothing against these plans. I think they're fine and it certainly does encourage people to go ahead with their ADUs and makes it easier for them. So I think it's a great idea. But I'm, I'm looking at this from an aspect of if I was going to be living in there, what I would be concerned about. And one of the things, because I've, I've lived in, lived in apartments in Kingsburg and one of the apartments I lived in didn't have a back door. It only had one front door. And that was really a big disadvantage because there was an available patio space either on the back or the side. I can't remember which. But I had no access to it because there was no door. So I was never able to use that outdoor space. And forever, after I moved out of there, forever, I thought, you know, this would have been a much better apartment if I'd have had access to that patio space, but I didn't. And there are apartments in Kingsburg right now as we speak that don't, that have small patio space access and they don't have a back door. So I, I would like to see the flexibility of being able to put in a, a back door. And it is possible to change the window to a door. For instance, if somebody wanted to build this and the person moving in wanted to have access to a patio space that was available, I think they should have the option of putting in a door. It can be a sliding door. It can be a French door. It can be an ordinary door. And it's easy to change one of those window positions to, to a door. So the point I'm trying to make is, I'm looking at the basic plan, which is great, and flexibility to go with it for the people who want to build this. The outside is not gonna change. You gave us those elevations. That's not gonna change. They're all fine. But the inside should have, in my mind, a lot of flexibility. In other words, if somebody wants to flip the floor plan into a mirror image where instead of having the kitchen where it is, you flip the, put the kitchen on the other side because there's available patio space where the kitchen should be, so he flips the kitchen over to the other side and that gives him access to put in a side door or a back door to use his patio space, that makes perfect sense to me. I don't, it shouldn't be in any reason. They can't do that. It doesn't, doesn't change the basic outside structural design. Changing a window to a door, not specifying sliding door, but just saying door. Could be a sliding door, French door, ordinary door. French door is good because if you took out the window and put a French door in, you basically still have a window, only you don't have a window and a door. That kind of flexibility makes sense to me for, for, because everybody has different tastes. Everybody different tastes and different, different desires. And so is it, is that an insurmountable change to make? To offer that flexibility for interior construction, interior floor plan for somebody?
No, no. We, we do mirror, mirror plans all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, sometimes, yeah, it falls onto personal preference, lot design, lot dimensions. So, yeah, we, we do, we do it all the time. That's, that's, that's not, that's not an unreasonable request. We could, we could certainly accommodate that.
So if the planning commission agrees that that kind of flexibility is an advantage to people building these, certainly might even make it easier to attract renters because if a renter comes in and says, oh, I wanna have access to that patio space, but the kitchen's in the wrong place, then he can change that and that flexibility may offer him, the owner, more opportunity to, to rent it or sell it. So if the planning commission is in agreement that that kind of flexibility has big advantages, then I'd like to include that in the recommendation for these plans. The other thing was, is there, did the city talk about any restrictions on the size of the footprint that's available to build these plans on? In other words, we do that with houses. You know, the, the lot, the footprint of the house and the lot size have, have to be in, there's certain restrictions. Was there any talk about outside space, like a four, five-foot space around it? Or could theoretically somebody build this with a fence up against the house on three sides?
Conceivably, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. The city of Kingsburg, we, we don't have an ADU ordinance right now that clearly establishes development standards for ADUs. So in, in lieu of that, we're required to essentially adopt state mandated requirements, which mean that development standards can't be subjective, I believe that's a-
Yes, they need to be what they call objective standards at this point, which is, which is, the devil's in the details about to- in the details about defining that, and a lot of planners are struggling with just what that means. But the state law does require that we are not allowed to consider lot coverage when it comes to ADUs.
Say that again, I'm lost.
Lot coverage, so right now, there's, I believe, a forty percent lot coverage for single-family residential.
Okay.
It's the footprint of the building on the, on the size of the lot. But an ADU is exempt from that.
Oh, okay.
When it wasn't before. So that's one of the issues. The other issue is that four-foot setbacks, side yard setbacks, that's also common now with ADUs, according to state law. So we're a little limited in terms of what we can, can and can't do.
Okay, again, the setbacks for ADUs is, what'd you say, four feet?
Four feet, from the property line.
That's now required for ADUs?
It's not required, but it's allowed.
Oh, I see.
So ordinarily, if we had five, or maybe ten setback, depending on where you're building your structure, that, you know, we couldn't require anything that's more restricted than what the state.
So I'm going to put you on the spot. What do you think? Should we have a required buffer space, four or five feet around the ADU, rather than somebody putting up, putting it against fences or walls on three sides, so?
Well, some of this is fire code, too.
I'm exaggerating this, but.
Yeah, some of this is fire code, so some of this would be, would come out of the requirements for, for space around buildings, and between buildings, too, between a primary structure and then the ADU. So this is, I think the good news about this is that this gives people options to look at, affordable ones. They're not badly designed. And where we cite it on the property is a little limited by state law. And that, you know, that we can explain to the property owner when they come in, so.
Okay. So, so it's probably not appropriate for us at this time to make any recommendations for setbacks. I mean, I think it would be appropriate for us to talk about, you know, being flexible with the floor, interior floor plan, and the position of a window and a door.
I would agree.
But the setbacks, I guess we'll leave it up to the city.
Setbacks, we need to, we need to drop back and wait on that.
Yeah.
So, and we really are very, we're limited in terms of what we can, we can, we can require, for instance, matching roof materials.
Yeah.
That's considered an objective standard.
Okay.
Chair Cooper, I think that, you know, it is important, you know, when we're talking about, you know, setbacks and distances between structures, and we do see this quite a lot, is that, now let's say, for example, a property owner wants to use this particular plan, and here were my mouse is, they have an interior lot line here, and they say, well, I want to put this ADU four feet from this interior lot line. State says I can do it, I'm going to do it. That doesn't exempt you from building code requirements. So, yeah, you could put it four feet from an interior lot line, but guess what? You now have to fire it both the inside and the outside of this wall, which means that you're going to be increasing the cost of building this structure. When we're talking about fencing, okay, let's say, for example, you know, I'm going to come six inches out here, and I want to put a six-foot tall fence. You know, it's my property, I should be able to do that. Anyway, you're correct. However, I'm going to come in, and I'm going to say, now, wait a minute, we have a bedroom here. This window right here is your designated rescue opening.
Oh, okay.
So the idea being is, okay, if there's a fire that is blocking this, this main egress point here, this is your door, come out here, and then you come out the front door, you can bust out this window, and you can get out. Well, you still need to maintain a thirty-six inch wide passage to the outside of the structure, from where this rescue opening is. So, yes, you do have a lot more leniency in your development standards, but that pesky building code is going to come and get you.
Okay, so maybe the building code would take care of some of this question, then, for setbacks and the position of fences. Okay. Now, treating these as condos, where you can sell them.
How does that work with the property?
That's actually a new state law now, and nobody's asked us to do that. And I think that there are people who are considering doing that, but the larger picture, I think, especially in the Central Valley, is that to have this as a whole offering for your property, a primary structure, and then an ADU, or a junior ADU, or something like that, really increases the value. You know, if you start splitting them into smaller, at smaller parcels, or selling them individually, it really does, I think, change the, you know, the perceived value of that property. So, although it's state law, we haven't seen anything. And nobody, there used to be that we would require that there was a covenant, that if you lived in that, you had to be related to, or, you know, it was owned, in, in, inclined by the primary residents. They did away with that recently. But that doesn't mean that everybody's jumped on that and said, what a great idea, you know, we're just going to sell this individually. I think in the Bay Area, you might see that.
So ultimately, do you think the state's objective is to allow a homeowner to carve this out and sell it as a unit with the property that goes with it?
Who knows? I'm trying to be diplomatic here about what the state intends, and what, you know, what the consequence, that's what the consequences might be on that.
So now they're not allowed to do that?
Oh, they're allowed to do that now.
Oh, they are?
They are, but you don't see it.
Oh.
Especially, I mean, we haven't seen it, planners haven't seen it in the Central Valley. I think there's a reason for that. You might see it in Walnut Creek, you might see it in areas of San Diego, or LA, you know, but, but, or not, or not. But this was just considered an impediment to furthering housing, affordable housing, and so they made that law.
Yeah, I think I, you know, kind of piggyback on that, and I think I told all of you about, this past November, I was at our yearly training for California building officials. And I was in this seminar with two hundred other building officials from all across California. And the topic of the seminar was these new ADU laws, specifically about this one. And the presenters from Housing Community Development, HCD, said, okay, yeah, now you can sell them as a condo. Two hundred hands shot up in the air, mine included, because, you know, okay, I'm the building official here, and you have development standards, don't really get into that very, very often, but you have sewer crossing property lines now. How's that going to work? That's, you can't do that in the building code. And the direction from HCD was, you guys figure it out.
Sure.
And that's why I think, you know, one of the conditions that we were speaking about was separating all of the utilities. So, okay, yes, let's just say, for example, some property owner decides that they're just going to treat this as a condo. At least if we have a condition that separates all of the utilities, we don't have any sort of conversations about sharing utilities. Everything is separated. So, if the state does come down with direction as to, this is how we're going to treat it, this is how jurisdictions are going to, trying all of this information, at least we can say they used a pre-approved ADU plan, and we made sure, as part of a requirement for using this plan, these have to be separated. Everything has to be separated.
So let's identify some specifics then. So my understanding is the planning commission is in agreement that there should be a stipulation for separate utilities on these units?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Should the commission?
But is that even legal? Because when this was first introduced, when ADUs started coming out, they were actually piggybacking off of the main house. So the sewer line would run to the main house, the PG&E, the same thing, they would connect through the main house. Now we're going to be saying, no, you have to have separate utilities. So now we're going to have new connection fees to the sewer system, we're going to have PG&E fees.
You know, I would, I would recommend that we allow staff to research that just a little bit, but I think that requiring it might be difficult, or not, but recommending.
Let me jump in here. This is the city's pre-approved plan. And so, yeah, we commission it, and there's nothing.
And as part of the ADU, being able to participate, actually, as an ADU, can the city legally say you have to have your own connections, you have to pay for these fees in addition to building this ADU?
No, we, we, we don't have to do that. However, if an applicant comes in and says, I don't want to have my own electrical meter, I don't want to have my own sewer connection, that does not preclude an applicant from submitting their own ADU plan. And we would review it like we would any other plan check submitted. So this is just strictly, this is, you want to use our plan, that's perfectly fine, but these are going to be some of the restrictions that we have. And even though there are some, you know, these ADU, these ADU requirements, and, you know, you bring up, you know, the separate utilities, and they, maybe they could piggyback on to existing, existing infrastructure that may already be on the property. There's nothing saying that an applicant cannot do that, we actually, we see that all the time. But they would have to, at that point, submit their own design. They would not be able to use our pre-approved plan.
You can't use the pre-approved plan unless you have separate utilities? Is that what you're saying?
That would be, that was a suggested condition from some of the commissioners.
You're adding a residence, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you're adding a residence, you're adding people, I don't understand why somebody like me, who lives in a single-family house, should have to pay for somebody else's ADU and J-ADU to use the same facilities that I'm using. I mean, I would assume that that would be part of the building permit process, is you would have to have an additional connection fee, because I can imagine somebody running twenty-five heads on a property, all connected to the same thing, and paying the same fee that I did for three.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me, for everyone.
No, that's a good point. And, you know, this has, this has been a struggle for building officials and planners across California regarding these ADUs. And, you know, specifically, it comes down to sewer. A lot of times, especially in older areas, sewer's not sized correctly, to be able to account for the additional units that are going to be added with an ADU. Separating utilities, if somebody comes to the counter and says, hey, I want to build an ADU, AJ, what do I have to do? I always recommend separating utilities. Again, the thing is, is the state says, you know, we can't require them to do that. And approval of this pre-approved plan with that particular covenant does not, you know, close the door on that. They still can use the existing infrastructure, it's their property, if that's what they want to do, and they can meet all the code requirements, but they would just have to submit their own design.
Okay, so the best way to look at this is they can, when they apply for the year, they have the option of having separate utilities, but it's not mandated. Is that the best way to look at it? The whole idea of this is for us to apply, to provide standard plans that meet whatever criteria we set, so that we can go ahead and comply with whatever the new state law is. Does not preclude us, or does not preclude anyone from coming in with their own design and using their own design. All we're doing is, all we're doing right now is needing to comply with this new state law, period.
By having one selected plan, someone can pull off the shovel.
And they can change the interior, whatever they want to do, they'd have to do it on their own plan. They could, they could take this as a basic plan and modify it, having their own engineer do the trusses and all that other kind of stuff they want to. We just need to go ahead and approve one plan to comply with this regulation, this new state law. So, following up on that, so you don't need any input from us on separate utilities?
If that's, if that's a condition that you would like for us to write into a resolution to the city council, you know, we can certainly do that.
What else?
I would like to see another configuration of the bathroom in the single bedroom, so that you can access it from the living area, because you don't necessarily want company going through your bedroom to get to your bathroom. And just taking out the closet isn't necessarily the answer, because there is a way to reconfigure that bathroom. Move, switch, I mean, you and I talked about that. It could be reconfigured so that there'd be an access from the living room. Because if you have company over, and these people already have a bar up there to accommodate people, companies, then it seems like it would be reasonable to have them have access to the bathroom, without having to go through your messy bedroom, or whatever's in there.
I think, though, that all that would be addressed when the person has to submit their plans. I do this every day, and no one ever picks the same thing. Everybody changes everything all the time, which is part of the problem, so. I don't think we, as a commission, can do seventy-five different layouts and seventy-five different plans. They still have to provide Title 24, they still have to provide roof calc. You want to change the inside, you can make it one big gigantic studio for all I care, just bring in the right documents, and you have your plan basically pre-approved, ready to go. Some people will want mini-split, some people want heat pumps, I mean, the options of changing window locations, and changing them in the doors, and all the other things, I think just would be way too much work for us to try to provide, you know.
But we would, we would like to have the, let them know that they have the option of doing that.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that would come with the plan, since they have to do that anyways. They can do whatever they want on the inside. It's just more of a, this is a cookie cutter plan, I don't want.
And we could, we could provide a notation on the pre-approved plan, that's essentially, this is, this is an option.
Right, and I would like to see that included.
Okay, before you leave that point, let, I'll be quiet.
No, please continue.
Basically, if we can get these plans, we can use these plans, these plans don't cost us, the city, a dime.
Correct.
And then we can move forward with it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, good to go. And I agree with Commissioner Brock, they're going to change this thing up any way they want to. But this satisfies what the state says we need to do, that plan is fine, has drawn, there's a reason why it's drawn the way that it's drawn. If they want to change it up, then they can re-engineer any way they want to, but, you know.
All right, then, thank you. I have to open this for public comment, this is supposed to be a public hearing, so. This time I'd open this discussion for public comment, see if anybody in the public wants to come forward with this. Not seeing anyone interested in taking advantage of that opportunity. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for continued commission discussion. Anybody else want to say anything about the plans, make any suggestions?
Just question, are you going to then develop a resolution and bring it back to us?
I certainly, if that's, if that's the commission's prerogative, I certainly could do that.
I mean, otherwise, what kind of a motion would we be making tonight?
Essentially presenting the plans as presented, moving them forward to council for their final approval.
Okay. I so move.
So I'm going to close the public comment at this time. Public comment section is closed. So we'll bring it back for possible actions.
I made a motion.
To?
I think you have to say, say it again.
To, to take, to accept the plans and have they, have it presented to the city, is that what you said?
Actually.
Right down where? The very bottom, down here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Under letter F.
F1, F1.
My first page.
Where are we? Approve the design concepts as presented, and move the matter forward for city council consideration.
Would you also like to make as part of your motion that the design plans would offer the opposite of flexibility for interior changes?
Yes, and he said that he would make a notation of that on the plans.
Okay. There we have our motion. We have a second for the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion or amendments? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Hearing none, the motion carries. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Next item, future items. Holly, do we have any future items?
Good evening, I just wanted to mention that we have just finalized our general plan update contract with the engineering consulting firm, Provo &amp; Pritchard. They're up, they're in North Fresno, and they're, they are a big Central Valley presence for not only engineering, but planning. And. our general plan update contract with the engineering consulting firm Provo and Pritchard. They're up, they're in North Fresno, and they're, they are a big Central Valley presence for not only engineering, but planning. And we, we, I believe, in pretty good hands on that. We, they came in at a very decent price. There's going to be some outreach, there'll be some joint meetings with council and, and planning commission as we roll out the general plan update, in terms of policies, goals, visioning, that kind of thing. They, they will do some social media outreach, too, and be at some of our, our local festivals with information booths, that's part of the visibility of what you will see in their effort. There will be, of course, a lot of behind-the-scenes data gathering, and writing, and drafting, and the, the things that go with the general plan. But it's been thirty years, it's a great victory that we finally have that on the books, and money to do it, and we will move forward with that. So, that's the big, that's the big news from the planning department, anyway.
When they reduce this to writing, is it going to be available for perusal on the website?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's part of the process, yes.
All right, okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, and thank you for your input, also, this past month on this.
He's, he's taking his dishes to the sink?
Please.
You might turn the mic on. Save the end for the back.